You need a minute? I guess you can have... Are you ready? Can we pause a minute, let me speak to the attorney before we get started? What's your name?
Camilla Rodriguez.
Do we got a copy of this tonight? We'd like to take and welcome each and every one to the April 28, 2016, Walton County's zoning board of adjustment. If you would please stand as we have our invocation followed by the pleasurable leashes. Tammy, if you would.
Okay. If you'll bow your heads, please. Have any father look over us and give us the wisdom and the strength to do what's right for our neighbors and other members of this residence. We hope you do right by you. Amen.
Let us just declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Like to introduce a new board member tonight. Mr. Charlie McKinley is serving in the capacity of District Two. He was appointed by Cecilia Jones. We welcome you to our board looking forward to the contribution that you make and the input. We appreciate all the other members being here tonight. I understand Art and Scott. Do we need to do...
I believe Kerry's informing me that we need to vote on a new vice chair whenever we get a chance. We can take that up now or at the end of the meeting if you'd like. Sorry.
You want to do that, but maybe in the next meeting when we have a full board?
Yes, sir.
What you think?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. That was before I got through thanking you for being our attorney. We may not agree, but we do appreciate that it's not personal, I can assure you. Kerry, we appreciate all the work that you do. Other planning department personnel, thank you. Are there any other announcements needed to be made that you want to address the... Do you have anything you want to say?
Well, I think the only announcement would be for the applicants and appellants that are here. As you can see, we don't have a full board tonight.
We can get to that in a minute.
Okay. Yes, sir. Then I have no other announcements.
What about the appeal? We have an appeal filed on the decision. Do you want to address that with the board?
I would gladly do that. So, as you may know, the Walton County Board of County Commissioners authorized staff to take an appeal of the decision, and it has a different name, but I think it's commonly known as the Caya Development. It was an appeal you guys heard, I believe, back in February. The petitioner, actually represented by Ms. Parsons who's here, so it's Mr. Dice and Ms. Parsons. Their petition for a certiora was filed, I'm going to say, over a month ago. Ours is due in the next coming weeks. So, we will be filing a response as well as Mr. Theriaque who represented the appellant at the time before you. And we can gladly provide you guys copies of our response if you would like, which is do that individually.
I always welcome the appeal. I'm glad that, you know, I'm glad we have the appeal process and always welcome it. My question is, since the county commissioners has authorized, the county commissioners had... You couldn't do it on your own, right, Mr. Dice? So, therefore, the county commissioners had to take and file the appeal. Mark Davis is the attorney for the county and he's our attorney. I mean, is that a conflict or is that an issue?
No, sir. Not in this particular case because Ms. Parsons is going to be representing Mr. Dice. Mr. Dice is actually the individual who, well, I don't know if it was Mr. Dice, it might have been one of the county commissioners, but it was not Mr. Davis that asked the BCC to consider allowing them to take the appeal.
You don't think that's a conflict, having the county attorney and our attorney and then the county commissioners, and that's not a conflict?
No, sir. I don't believe that's a conflict. But as you know, you guys are getting your own attorney hopefully in the next, so I think we're set for June. So, hopefully, we can resolve any issues on a go-for basis, but I do not believe that's a conflict.
Will Mark represent this board or will Ms. Theriaque represent the board or will be a co-representation?
Mr. Davis will represent the board. He'll be filing the response on behalf of the board. But I imagine it'll mirror what Mr. Theriaque will be arguing.
But he also is involved in the appeal, Ms. Theriaque.
Yes, yes, absolutely. He'll be filing a response as well to the petition for a certiora.
Interesting. Everyone understand that?
No.
You remember?
I understand the most time.
Let's go ahead with the swearing-in of the witnesses. Each and every person here tonight that anticipate standing and testifying either for or against issues before us, please stand, raise your right hand to be sworn.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give before this board will be the truth? Thank you. Whenever you come before the board to speak, if you would, just spell your last name for the record and state that you've been sworn in. Also, we have a court reporter here tonight, so please speak one at a time, no interrupting each other.
As our attorney said earlier, we have five board members. I have seven. It takes four affirmative to pass or deny. Anyone that has a request for us tonight, you have the right to take and postpone, continue. You have the right to continue your requests until we have a full board or more board members. We're hoping to be able to have more people attend on a regular basis, so hopefully, we will not wind up in these situations. And it's also my understanding, Ms. Minchu, that you represent Tammy, so therefore, she will have to recuse herself. So, you will have to be pretty good tonight to get four out of four. You have the right to continue to another date or you have the right to continue tonight. What would you like to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question. Are there appointees coming from the new board or is there a reason why we're not having seven here typically?
Mr. Art Miller, to my understanding, had a previous engagement that he cannot get out of. Scott, I understand may have some health issues from possibly a snake bite he suffered, but I'm sure he has tried everything he could do to be here, and Ms. Miller always tried to be here. So, it's not something intentional that...
No, I'm not saying that. I just wondered if we were waiting for new appointees or something.
No, ma'am.
Just this night happened to be...
Yes, ma'am.
Because we're very anxious to move on with the process, as you can imagine, and I would hate to put it off and just be in the same situation in June.
We will try everything that we can do to insist that the board members be here in May. We will have a May meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
We have a meeting 30 days from now.
Okay. This is kind of unusual situation, Chair, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, you had some pretty strong words for our application last month.
We're going, I'm going to address that because you addressed it and I'm going to address that in just a minute.
And, you know, if we have to have a unanimous approval and you're one of the votes...
That's right.
If there's no opportunity to make our presentation without you having already made up your mind, then I think that it would be very difficult, obviously, for us to...
It's not only I made up my mind, ma'am, it's the fact this board has already heard this case. It's the fact that the appellate court, your appeal process has already been through the circuit court. The circuit court has upheld our decision. With that being said, let's go ahead and address the public records request. Obviously, you think I have alternative motive in this. I do not. I have purchased probably, I don't know how many tax deeds in my lifetime. I have defended quite a few of them in court. I've won some, I've lost some, most of them, I feel like we have trained the clerk of court's office and you can talk to those personnel from the litigation that I participated in on how to do a proper tax deed. When I noticed that there's a tax deed and that tax deed is off record and it discussed, I think, the issue, and I believe you understand the issue, of easements that is in the language of the tax deed. Is that correct? And its position, without getting into testimony, this position of the petitioner that, from looking at the transcript previously, I believe it's position of the petitioner that since it's a tax deed, it's a tax deed sale, then the easement doesn't exist. My position on this issue is fact number one, I don't feel like that you have the opportunity to come back once it's been heard, once the process has been taken place, but it's also my position to defend any easement off record. Reason being that is because I purchase easements, I give easements, I understand the importance of easements. That's why I take a position on this, but also take a position that it's not been heard. But there's no conspiracy here that I have...
That's why, Mr. Chairman, that I...
...texted or emailed or called or spoke. I'm just kind of disappointed in the fact that you're coming back before us.
And that's why I am very concerned about you making a decision on this case, Mr. Johnson, because you haven't heard anything about what we are going to present to this board, which changes everything that you just said.
Whenever the appeals process, the circuit court...
Mr. Johnson, Ms. Noes has been through this for years.
He had the opportunity to...
She's sitting here and knows, she knows exactly what's going on here, and we haven't even gotten to that issue.
It is my opinion that they have the appeal to the appellate court to appeal the decision of the circuit court. That's my position on this.
We are prepared to address those issues, but with the understanding that we have to have a unanimous decision from this board tonight in order to have any success. And you've put on the record very clearly that you've already made up your mind before we present any evidence.
It was my intent to answer your public records request. That's all I was trying to do, and I feel like I've done that.
Well, you also went forward and told us that you've already decided...
I had to do that to defend my position that I took because of the easement that I record through the tax deed that is in part of our package, that the language in the transcript, this was not part of our package, and I did request it because it should have been part of our package.
It's in my package, sir.
Well, it's not in our package.
Well, that's not my fault.
That's why I requested it.
It's in my package that I was about to give you.
And I was able to get it.
The problem, Mr. Johnson, is that we are supposed to have a full, open hearing before this board without any prejudice, without any bias, without any...
You had that in 2010.
Without any decision being made ahead of time.
You had that in 2010.
This man right here, who is my client, who is the only owner of this property ever, has never been here.
You're, so you're saying that this has never been before this board?
My client...
You're saying the issue has never been before this board?
Rest judicata does not apply.
Pardon me?
Rest judicata does not apply.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we get into this procedural matter, can we figure out whether or not this is being continued tonight? Because we'd rather have it on the record and allow us to present what we're moving forward, what we're moving for procedurally ourselves if it is going to be discussed tonight.
Do you want us to hear this tonight or not?
That's why I wanted it on the record. I'm going to request that you recuse yourself, Mr. Johnson, because you've made it clear that you've already made your mind...
Well, I'm not going to recuse myself.
All right. On that basis, then, there's no way that we can have a fair hearing until the entire board is here and then we will have a request to continue.
Thank you very much. Make a motion to have it continued to May meeting?
Motion.
Second.
And please make sure that it's on the record that we did request you recuse yourself and that you denied it.
Mr. Chairman, if you recused and Tammy recuses, there's only three votes left, so we would be ineffective, would we not?
I don't think anyone has the right to ask the board member that's heard a previous decision to recuse herself. Is she going to have Scott to recuse herself? But that's beside the point. We got a motion, we got a second. How the board vote? Long, favorite eye?
Second, please.
I do.
Long, favorite eye? Tony, how's your vote?
All right.
Tammy?
Ms. Minchu, recuse yourself.
Continue to May meeting.
And can you tell me the date?
Yes. And Ms. Minchu, I know you're coming from Pensacola and Dr. DeFranchise is coming from Louisiana. If you'd like, we try to get an idea from the board members whether or not they're going to be here, but that's not always accurate. But if you want to call either me or Ms. Beeman, I guess, a week before the meeting, try to give you an idea of the full board.
Well, I'd appreciate that. I know that last month, we were told we had to come in person to request that of Mr. Johnson. We really want to move forward on this, and I have with me these boxes that are all of the evidence to show you why we should have our hearing.
The issue's been discussed and we appreciate it and we'll see you in May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to go on record to say there again, I believe it's, I don't understand, Sue was talking about recusing, Mark Davis represented the gentleman, so he can't be the attorney, and therefore, you've worked for Mark Davis?
Mr. Davis actually represented Dr. DeFranchise's father.
So, is that a conflict?
I don't believe that Mr. Davis has a conflict any longer on this case.
Is it the same issue?
Mr. Johnson, that's, I guess, that's for you guys to hear at the hearing in May.
I'm just trying to understand, is there a conflict with you, Mark, representing this board? Should we wait till we get another attorney and do it in May, in June?
I don't believe I have a conflict of interest, and I don't believe Mr. Davis has one any longer now that it's Dr. DeFranchise instead of Mr. DeFranchise.
But was it the same issue?
I can't speak on that until we have a hearing in May.
Everything's a record. Thank you very much. Let's move along to the next item, number two. Boomy Consulting, are you representing them?
It's withdrawn.
It's been withdrawn.
Oh, okay.
They're withdrawing their request.
Melissa, are you next up?
Last time on the agenda, Corville.
Yes. Corville, variance request?
Yes, sir.
State your name for the record, as to tell us why you think we should grant you a variance.
Yes, sir. I'll do my best. Melissa Ward for Saxon La Sore, representing John and Patty Corville. Briefly, our request this evening, as advertised, is to allow the covenants and restrictions recorded for Village of White Cliffs to govern the setbacks for the Corvilles' building. They have an adopted architectural review code that is in place and has been in place in a existing development that is nearly built out. This request is not unfamiliar to you, you've had a few of them before, for the Village of White Cliffs. Unfortunately, the association has not come forward as a whole to request the variance where we're requesting for Lot 18. I would like to give some exhibits for you to look at that will help in understand what we're asking for and why we're asking for it. In particular, this variance is involved in the fact that we have a memo that was done by the director that says you have covenants and restrictions. The county does not regulate those, so if you need to get, if you want the covenants and restrictions, it doesn't, it doesn't say that, I'm paraphrasing, so I apologize. Covenants and restrictions are not governed by the county. If you want them to govern your property, you have to get a variance. That's, that's the intent of that memo, basically. Is that fair?
Yeah. For those, for those older subdivisions that were, you know, we've not had valid order.
Right, right. So, Village of White Cliffs has been in place for quite some time, and in particular, their covenants and restrictions predate our comprehensive plan. And I'm not sure if you have it in your packet, but I have some exhibits that I'd like to hand out that are excerpts from the covenants and restrictions. If you need a full copy, I may have one here, but I don't have extra copies. It's extensive.
Has this been before us before?
One like it has been.
But this particular lot has not?
It has not.
But we had one just a few months ago.
Yes, sir.
Of 53, 83, something up there closer, B, something in B.
Yeah.
I didn't represent them, I don't know, but I do know that you, within a short few months ago, have reviewed one as well, in Village.
But it's the same issue. The issue is the covenants of that subdivision is not in line with the county comprehensive plan, so therefore, you're trying to bring them in together, correct?
Right, basically. Land Development Code, Section Five of the Land Development Code. So, our client's property is, and let me just say too, I have exhibits that refer to the section of the code and stuff, and I'm more than willing to go over that with you and a copy of the memo that I'm talking about, but if you're already familiar with all of that, I'll move on to the next set of exhibits, you know, so we don't drag this out too long. That's at your discretion. The section, the first thing I'd like to hand out is the section of the code that speaks directly to the type of building structure for Lot 18 of this subdivision, which is our client's lot, and the exhibit identification in that particular set, that particular code. And Kerry, I know we'll mark that and hand those over to you. Highlighted on that document that I'm passing out reflects that Section 1.3 of the Village adopted code says that Exhibit One shows the actual setback lines, parenths, dotted lines, parenths, for each lot. So, the reason that's important is when you look at the code for a Type VI building, which Lot 18 is, on the next page of that exhibit, it'll show that the primary residence has a 20-foot front setback and eight and a half foot, I mean, an eight-foot setback on the, on the east side of the property, and the west side has a 12-foot setback. The exhibit one...
Before we, I mean, you know, I get a little nervous now when I see Mr. Volker as a surveyor of this lot. Is that true?
Not anymore.
Have y'all checked his work?
Let me, let me, I'd be happy to explain it to you. Mr. Volker did a survey for us. We have a copy of one here.
And it's in our package?
It, that is in your packet, but let me tell you that, to be honest with you, our clients, after our last hearing here where we spent some time talking to you about Mr. Leach's situation, had, went out and had another survey done, is a part of our exhibit, pardon me, in a light, did their, I had too much stuff for this table, has done a revised survey.
Did we have a copy of that one?
I have it for you. I'm not handing everything out in order like I wanted to, but I'll hand it to you. This is not my night. I'll hand this to Kerry.
So, you're not going to reference Mr. Volker's?
The Volker survey, as far as I can tell, is not inaccurate. The problem is, it doesn't reflect what we needed to show you. The survey that we are now passing out not only shows you the lot, Lot 18, which is our client's lot, it shows you, in addition, the houses to the east, which reflect that the houses are built in a line, that they have a reduced setback, no great, no less than 15 feet on each one of those, or not greater than 15 feet on them. The properties were built in alignment to the Exhibit One of the covenants and restrictions. And I think after this hearing, I will quit putting together copies amounts of packages and just give you the things that you asked for them. If you have in your packet, I'm not sure, Vivian, did they have a exhibit one in your packet from the covenants?
Um, I believe, yes, yes, it's in there. It's not very valuable, but it's in there.
I have a, I wanted to show you a blow-up that may be helpful. What I've handed to Kerry is a blow-up of a particular, that particular area along the Gulf of those lots that end or culminate in Lot 18, our client's property. And is, the exhibit itself has a dotted line that follows along or parallels the road to show what they expected and intended and, in fact, enforced as the front setback line.
Now, what did you just say? We're looking at number 22, just, Roland, you just handed out, or we're looking at...
The one that I just handed out was 2.3.
18, Lot 18.
Lot 18 has an arrow pointing to it in black.
And what was your comment?
If you'll see, there's sort of a yellow dotted line, that is actually the dotted line that's on this Exhibit One. This exhibit is a blow-up of the one that's in the recorded documents. They specifically state in their covenants and restriction that Exhibit One dotted line is a setback line. The reason that's important is because they used it perpetually for all these lots down here, the only one that's left out is Lot 18 because they haven't built out yet. They have continued to use that consistent line as their setback line. It is not 20 feet from that front setback, it is 15 feet. So, what we're asking is to allow the Architectural Review Board to approve, to be able to approve their building according to their own covenants and restrictions and not force them to be five feet behind their neighbors. That's what we're asking for.
Basically, what you're asking for is a five-foot setback. I mean, a five-foot variance in the front setback, go from 20 feet to 15 feet, as per described in the covenants of record.
Yeah, well, yes, I'm sorry, this is just a...
And that is what we've been doing for the last year or so, is bringing everything in compliance.
Yes, sir.
With the other lots.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
She does have opposition.
Pardon me?
She does have some opposition. I'm not sure what they're...
Well, we get, have any questions for her?
I have a question.
I got one. How many people, how many more times would this have to be listened to in that subdivision? Do you think?
I, they, the Corvilles, there are not that many houses in the subdivision, lots in the subdivision that are not built, but I honestly haven't done a count to see how many. The association does not want to pay right now to have an association variance. And I'd like to say to, our request on our behalf, on our client's behalf, regardless of whatever your decision is, is to not so much a 15-foot setback as it is to let the architectural code be the governing factor. Let them submit an ARB letter to the building department as proof that they meet their, they're compliant with their code, because this, the requirement here is, their ARB is much more stringent than the county. They have eight-foot setbacks, 12-foot setbacks, a minimum of 36 or 37 feet height. They're much more stringent. If there's anything that they decide they would do for them, we do not want to have to come back for another variance, to be honest. The request is, as it was advertised, is to let the ARB decide their building print on this property. That is our request.
Charlie, go ahead.
My question, the, the Type VI building in the, in the actual printed covenants was, was 20 feet on the front.
Yes, sir.
And, and so, the line was showing 15 feet?
Yes, sir.
And so, the, the 20 feet, you wanting to go, I mean, if you were to take it to the...
Architectural Review Board?
No, well, if you were to, if you were to go by the covenants themselves, wouldn't, would not the 20 feet delineated out be...
It specifically says that the Exhibit One is the governing factor. It specifically says that Exhibit One is the setback line. It draws it out that way. And, and I want to say too, as an exhibit I have, and I'll pass this out, is a letter from Jeff Prescott, the architect that reviews the Village of White Cliffs plans for their building review board, and he specifically states, "The Village of White Cliffs Board has decided to allow 15-foot front setback on Lot 18. The board having measured the other Gulf front yards and agreeing that discrepancies exist between different parts of the guidelines, meaning the map isn't what it says in tight print. The eight-foot and 12-foot side yard setbacks remain in effect." So, I'm going to hand that in. They have already approved it.
And you would agree to the more stringent side setbacks?
They're required to. The village wouldn't let them do it at seven feet like the county.
Okay.
There's no question there.
Yeah.
Is the board allowed to grant? Is the DRB allowed to grant variances?
They are allowed to grant variances. However, according to their own code, if they're varying, if they allow you to have a variance and it's different from what the county would allow, you have to come back to the county. You have to get a county variance.
Why hasn't this discrepancy been cleaned up by their DRB? They can amend that easily and how?
They could. I have no idea.
Where's it? I'm sorry, go ahead.
When, when we talked with the architect, when the Corvilles' architect talked with Jeff Prescott, they went through many discussions and trying to figure out what the situation was. We, the Corvilles, went back to them several times to say that this is what we believe this is. The exhibit itself appears to say 16 feet or 15 feet on the drawing, but it's blurry because it's an old recording and stuff. So they were not clear. They went out and measured it themselves. We had a survey. Their measurements and our survey are close enough for them to agree, and they've set that setback at 15 feet. I think that their intention was to have this nice clean line along the road, this way it looks, this way they've built out the other lots, and there's nothing that differentiates from that in their building plans. It doesn't show that way anywhere else in the subdivision. They're very neat and clean roads and setbacks along the roads. Very consistent, very uniform.
We will give you the opportunity to come back. Ms. Vivian?
Good evening. Vivian Schaller for the record, Carrie. We have done several of these now in Village of White Cliffs. We've done Sand Cliffs, we've done Biscaya. Unfortunately, they have not asked for a blanket variance in this particular subdivision. I think the staff position is that we're, you know, we encourage consistency with the pattern of design elements, and setbacks are one of them. And in this case, I believe, as in the other cases, that it would provide for a good standard development pattern.
Mr. Dice, why can't we grant a variance on all the remaining lots as their covenants allow?
I think it could be done. I think we had to have a request and had to, it had to be advertised and noticed that way.
Do you have to have a request?
I believe so. I mean, I think we need, I think if the HOA had requested that, I think that could be done. We would be in favor of that, so we wouldn't have any problem with that. But I think it would have to be re-noticed and done that way to do it. I will say, mention one thing that must say that kind of, to make sure I understood correctly. I think she was intuitionsing that maybe this board could approve a variance to allow them just to take their ARB letter and go to the Building Department. I don't believe that we can delegate our authority of our review to another private entity like that. So that's one thing that I would have a problem with. I still think it needs to come through the normal process. Have no problem with what they're asking for, except for that procedural issue. I would not be in favor of that, where we'd be delegating that to...
I don't, that's not, of course, I might have missed it. Thank another thought.
I may have misunderstood her, but if...
I think she was talking about taking it back for their review.
Right. But the county would still need, yeah, but if this board approves the variance, which, again, I'm not opposed to, we will still need to look at it, review it, do our normal process.
Then she agrees with that.
Yeah, okay.
Very good.
But to answer your first question, I believe it had to be noticed that way for the whole neighborhood. And this is something that, as you're all aware, where have this arose, for a number of years it had been allowed, however, they're inconsistent with the Land Development Code.
Right.
And so technically speaking, they would be in violation.
Why don't we deny it tonight and ask them to come back and ask for the whole thing?
I would probably recommend you may, if you approve it, and have them encourage everybody else to do it.
I think we need to get Erica to go, Melissa's going to say.
Actually, I did look at the 300-foot notification area that some of the places had to do from that subdivision. And if you're talking to blanket one, you've got condominiums next to you. I mean, it's very substantial. The noticing would be a very large expense. And so I think it's something that they would have to agree, the whole association would have to agree to, you know, make this kind of expenditure, which would be fairly large.
Or get all the vacant lots to agree. Very good. Leave them right alone. Melissa, you have anything to add? You want to clear up, Mr. Dice?
Yes, sir, if it's possible. I only meant, and I apologize for the misunderstanding, that when they came back for their building permit, they would have to have, of course, the normal set of plans. They'll have to have stuff from DEP because they're on the beach and they have a, and they're next to the coastal construction control line and crosses their property. They'll have to do all the normal things. But to explain the differences in their setbacks would be based on an ARB letter that says they comply with their code if the variance grants them that ability. That's, it's in addition to their regular submittal, not as a submittal by itself.
Do you agree with that, Melissa Dice?
Yes, I think my only concern was, you know, I understood that we're going to be delegating our authority of our review to a ARB, and if that's not the case, I have no problem with that.
Okay. Good deal. Anyone else here would like to speak in favor or against this request? Yes?
Scott Stevens. I'm the cam at Adagio, right next door. So we're, a lot of our owners are right within that notice kind of perimeter there, that radius there. When it initially came out, there was several owners, and I can't say that everybody's on exactly the same page at Adagio because it's a lot of voices. But generally, there was a lot of uproar because the notice was a little vague in terms of what the site plan, what they were actually requesting. And I'm mostly up here just to say that I've had some communication with her and Vivian, and I think we're in pretty clear understanding now that it is just that road setback that's in discussion, which I think the vast majority, not to a person, but the vast majority of the Adagio owners don't really mind what happens there as long as that shared boundary. And of course, the Triple CL line's not reviewed. So there is some stuff, I'm sure, in the packet that's been distributed, and that's just mostly was the clarity on that point.
We can just strand that and forget it?
I think so. You may have a couple. I would say Tom Canaris is one of our owners, and I don't know him personally, but he put a lot of effort into reviewing the structure of the notice and had some issue there. But the board in general, right up to today, I spoke to the president of the Adagio Board on the phone, and as long as it is just that north street face, the majority is not concerned.
Thank you very much.
Matt Carpenter of the Planning Department. All that we would request is that the board grant a specific variance.
Oh, we will.
So we know exactly what to write in the final order.
We definitely will.
Can I ask Mac a question while he's here? What, when they say the notice is vague, how does that happen? Who?
The applicant provides that notice.
And there's no review of the notice?
Not before it's sent. No, sir.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Motion to close it to public discussion.
Motion to close.
Second.
You made the motion. Charlie's second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the variance of reduction of the front property line setback from 20 feet to 15 feet.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I think as long as we're limiting it to that lot, I'm okay with it. I'm a little concerned. We really haven't talked in the past about these overall community guideline changes in terms of them granting themselves variances. And that has me a little concerned as something I think we should consider in detail when they come up in the future.
I don't think that's a concern of ours.
Not in this case. Not in this case. However, I just know that we've had other communities where they have an ARB process, and we didn't even consider possibly that they would grant themselves a variance.
But it doesn't matter. They've still got to get the county approval. So it doesn't matter if they grant the variance or not. They still have to go through the process to get the Building Department, the Planning Department approval.
Yes, in this case. I'm just thinking about potential proposals in the future. I'm sorry? Was to grant a variance for a reduction of the front property line setback from 20 feet to 15 feet.
Anything, Ms. Fletcher?
No, sir.
Danny?
No.
Charlie?
Aye.
Charlie, how you doing? I'll tell you, I won't do you that way. Charlie?
Aye.
Ms. Fletcher?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Yes.
Are you going to be with our meeting all the time? I mean, are you staying all night and night? Usually, you get up and leave when the important stuff's gone, but we're glad to have you. That means we're going to get it. Our decision's going to be appealed on a regular basis, right? You don't have to put all this down. Melissa, are you up for the next one?
Is that all you have?
I don't know.
That's all we got.
I'm very happy to represent anybody who'd like to.
I thought we had five.
No, three.
At least on Mac.
I think that was five people.
Okay, we got it. We got to, everyone had our opportunity to review the minutes from the Mark's meeting. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Danny's second it?
I wasn't here. I couldn't, so...
You still second it?
Okay, I'll second it.
Yeah, you read it. You read it, didn't you?
Yes, I did.
Still going through them, I'm sorry.
Tony? Motion and second. How you doing?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Aye. Charlie?
I wasn't here, but I...
Aye. Our attorney process, what's the latest update on that?
Yes, sir, on the selection process?
Yes.
I talked to Mr. Davis about it, and what he suggested, if you guys are okay with it, for both you and the code board, is, so the RFQ closes on June 2nd, so we could have all of the responses to you at your June meeting, and then at the June meeting, you guys could rank everyone, and then we would submit that along with the responses to the BCC to make the final decision, so the BCC could consider your input as a board.
When are you going to close the RFQ?
June 2nd is the last day for responses. So we could have you guys at your June meeting, and then it'd go back to the BCC the first meeting in July for the BCC to make the final decision.
What's the difference in RFQ and RFP?
An RFQ is a request for qualifications. RFP is a request for proposals. On an RFP, we're required to go with the lowest responsible bidder, but generally, price is the number one factor in RFP. In an RFQ, we can take into account other factors besides cost. So usually, whenever you're hiring engineers and attorneys, architects, you want to have an RFQ because sometimes the lowest cost is not the best.
The most cost is not the best.
That's true, too.
Look it up. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you going to be with us every time?
No, sir. I just got right here, and I'm probably going to be coming before you guys on the setback issue, so I'm just getting myself...
Oh, really? You charge us for these services? Well, good deal.
Did anybody sign a petition for Mr. Pilcher for me?
I didn't know. I think I've already done it.
For Pilcher?
When I do it again.
Yeah, it'll get thrown out of...
If I do it again?
Yeah, she'll catch, they catch it off the guarantee.
Did you change my name? I think I've already done it.
When is he on our appeal or decision?
You got to come. You got to come. There's no excuse.
I was out of town. This is...
I think we need, we need to please Art and Scott. Get, make sure they're here. We also get these people more notice. I mean, I don't know, when we got, that we got a full board.
Yeah.
And let people know.
How about missing all the...